In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has given adequate notice of this meeting by having published the date, time, and place of this meeting in the Home News Tribune and has posted notice of this meeting at 435 Mansfield Street, Highland Park, New Jersey. Lynda, can we have a roll call, please?
Before we do the roll call, we're going to swear in the student reps.
Ah, there it is.
I don't know.
All right, Lynda, please.
So, we have two new student representatives to the Board of Education, Vivek Paduri and Annie McCrone, and I will be asking them to recite the oath after me to swear them in as new student board members. So if the both of you can gather around the microphone and together you can recite after me the oath, okay? I do solemnly affirm
I do solemnly affirm
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
and I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
and I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
and to the governments established in the United States and this state
and to the same and to the same and to the governments established in the United States
under authority of the people
under authority of the people
and I do affirm that I possess the qualifications
and I do affirm that I possess the qualifications
prescribed by board policy for the office of a member of a board of education
prescribed by board policy for the office of member of a board of education
and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly
and I will faithfully, impartially, and justly
perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability
perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability
and I would like to be the first to welcome you onto the Board of Education. Congratulations.
Lynda, can we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Ms. Versa?
Here.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Here.
Ms. Bull?
Here.
Ms. Simarusti?
Here.
Mr. Dietz?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Ms. Sherber?
Here.
Mr. Sherman?
Mr. Wharton?
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is applied of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We need a motion to approve the minutes of the August 25th meeting, both regular public and executive session.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Is there any discussion about those minutes? Lynda?
Ms. Versa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Epstein.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simarusti?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Epstein on the 25th.
Mr. Wharton?
Lynda, were there any communications?
Communications were fairly quiet during the past two weeks. I would like to remind the Board of Education that the New Jersey School Boards Association Annual Workshop will take place in Atlantic City from October 28th through 30th of this year. If anyone is interested, please contact me or my administrative assistant. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Soto, superintendent's report.
Do you have any student update?
No.
Thursday.
No.
Next time.
Okay. This is my update. I want to share a couple of thoughts that I shared with the teachers and staff here at Highland Park, and I would like to read you these thoughts. If you expected a celestial grand plan tonight on how to address all the concerns you have, then I'm very sorry to disappoint you. I do not have that magic bullet. Please be assured that I will share my vision in a more succinct and thoughtful manner very soon. However, if you are interested in listening to some thoughts coming from the deepest chambers of my heart, then I ask you to join me in ushering a new beginning filled with hope and endless possibilities. As a teacher and as a parent, I walked thousands of miles in your shoes. Tonight, as your superintendent, I am privileged to walk alongside all the constituents here at Highland Park. My focus will always be to continue to deepen the critical work we have begun and to cultivate a passion to achieve a higher standard and take the ones that we already have and those skills to a high level for everyone. I intend to lead with strength, versatility, with clarity, and with a collaborative and transparent spirit. I recognize the enormous responsibility to make hard decisions that place the teachers, staff, and our children in the best position to succeed, and I intend to make them with your input, with decorum, with integrity, and with wisdom. Is everything perfect? There are no, they're not. There are a number of scheduling challenges that we need to figure out and overcome a whole slew of other areas. We are short-staffed. There are no assistant superintendents. There's no math and literacy supervisors, no coordinators, and I could continue on and on. However, we do have each other, an educational community that's hardworking, smart, determined, resilient, and relentless. This year, we begin with a number of new teachers and administrators, new units of studies across all content areas and all levels, grade common planning time, materials aligned to units, new Chromebooks, a new professional development model, professional learning communities that are well-planned for the year, a gifted and talented program for Irving and Bartle that's already in the planning, and more professional development and program modifications to improve the use of technology, instructional services to our special needs children, and also our English language learners. Last year, at approximately this time of year, I sat quietly in this very same venue as the new assistant superintendent, not fully knowing what to anticipate in the midst of a community outcry, what a difference a year makes. This is what I've learned from this community we serve and what areas really matter moving forward. Tone. A tone of collegiality where learning from each other and deepening the work we do is embraced by all, where there is excitement, where there is hope, and an environment of mutual trust. Tone matters. Respect. A culture where we all validate, we're all validated for our commitment, our expertise, and our individuality as professionals, as parents, and as human beings, because respect matters. Words. The tone can be a double-edged sword. It can be life-fulfilling and edifying, or it can be destructive and life-sucking. Let's use words that encourage and build on ideas and the human spirit, not tear them down. Use words as a clear and concise communication to get everyone on the same page, void of confusion. Words that speak truth. Words that speak wisdom. I found a quote that states, "From the mouth speakest the heart." Ladies and gentlemen, words matter. Engagement. Even more so than words, engagement, action behind those words. I believe in the power of team, everyone working together towards common goals, an entire learning community fully galvanized. Ladies and gentlemen, choose to get involved and contribute because we have so much to accomplish. See, engagement matters. And last but not least, celebrations. I believe that we should celebrate individual and collective accomplishments as much as possible. There was something magical about edifying someone for a job well done. Our schools should be reflective of such celebrations in and out of classrooms. It sends a strong message to students and the community that we are excited about what we do. Each classroom and each school should tell the story of what we are doing, what we are learning, how we're learning it, and why we're learning it. Today, we opened our doors to our beloved students. Each school reported a smooth opening day. It is wonderful to hear a concert of happy voices throughout each building once again as we opened our doors to them. As we continue our efforts to stabilize this district and inject a dose of excitement and purpose, I ask you to join me in making this school year one of deep learning for all, one that is memorable for all, one that is safe, and last but not least, one of personal growth for all. Thank you for your vote of confidence.
Board Committee reports. Claire, could we have the Curriculum Committee report, please?
Yes. Before I give the committee report, Mr. Soto, I know I've told you privately, but I also want to tell you publicly how happy we are that you are with us for, as we transition.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the Curriculum Committee, we met tonight. We only have two items on our agenda. I need to read in two changes. To item number one, please note that Jodi Longo is only appointed in the position of the high school anti-bullying specialist until her last day, which is September 22nd, 2014. Also, item two, should read
I'm sorry, Claire, it's actually September 12th.
12. What did I say?
22nd.
I made a mistake. I'm sorry.
It happens.
I gave her 10 extra days of work. Okay, number two, approval of curriculum and benchmarks. It should read, "I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the new curriculum and benchmarks for mathematics." That's all the curriculum that's been written, which covers kindergarten through pre-calculus, as well as the new curriculum for English Language Arts in grades K through 12. Please note, it does not include the ELA benchmarks. As we discussed tonight, the way that curriculum is currently written, the curriculum is wonderful, the benchmarks themselves are also wonderful, but there's far too many of them. We would like that to be revisited. We think it's too many. And that is that. And I'll pass this down to Lynda if she wants to.
Sir, any discussion of the curriculum items?
Actually, I have a question, something I didn't notice until just now, actually, that there's two anti-bullying specialists for Irving, both Ms. Wysosantki and Mr. Shalala. Is there a
Well, they're working in pairs.
They're working together?
The principal is the
Is there a reason there's two there but not at the other schools?
No, he's just helping out.
He's just helping out, thank you.
Well, that's also the building that he's located in.
Oh, he's housed there.
Is there any other discussion of the curriculum items?
Just a brief comment, as I think you stated, Claire, the actual structure and the framework with which the curriculum was put together, it was incredibly impressive. You can see a lot of hard work went into that, the level of detail and specificity. Obviously, I'm not in education, but my gosh, the amount of work that went into the development of that, and I feel like you could, you know, get a really good sense of what we were trying to accomplish through that curriculum, so everyone involved should be commended.
Is there any other discussion of those items? Catherine?
The Finance Facilities Committee, you did meet, although it was really just Lynda and me, and there are no agenda items of note, but the, there are some items we did discuss. The high school balcony is almost complete. They have to put seat numbers on the seats, and they're also in the process of selecting a donor board that the people who gave money, thank you, for the renovations, the names will be on a board in the lobby. The paved area behind Bartle School was repaved last week. That ended up being a little bit more complicated than they thought, just because the subbase was not as thick as required, and it cost a little bit more, but it is complete. The middle school, high school media center has a new carpet, which we should all be very, very pleased with, because it was really awful, and Lynda says it looks great, and it's also in those squares, so that if you get a leak, you can take up the square and replace it. It's great. The gym floors at Irving, Bartle, and the high school were refinished in late August. The middle school will be done this month in the two-day break at the end of the month. The Bartle School window replacement project, the windows are on order. This is a project that's going to be done after school on an ongoing basis. It's going to take a little while to do, but obviously, they can't work on it when the kids are around. Right, we did, yeah, that's a broad grant, we, so we paid for part of it, but part of it is paid by the state. We're working on getting competitive quotes for the Irving School and Bartle School playground repairs that hopefully will be on the agenda for the next meeting, and we can move forward on that work. The new high school sign has been ordered and will be installed soon. This was funded entirely from student funds, mainly from volleyball tournaments. TEMCO, as we discussed, is, we're in a shared services agreement with the borough, and they started providing custodial services to the borough this week. And we will going, we'll be going out for an RFP on a new copier lease to replace copiers that have reached the end of their previous lease term, and just to put every, all the copiers on one lease, so that also will be on the next agenda. And just the poison ivy, we've had a couple of notes on that, and that will be taking, I mean, has been taken care of mostly. There may be a couple of spots still to address, perhaps under the bleachers. And that's it.
Is there any discussion of the finance items? Thank you for the very thorough report. Ann Personnel?
Personnel Committee met tonight. Apart from the agenda items, we talked about the new HIB configuration within the buildings, that there are now building-level specialists and a district coordinator who will be meeting monthly and sort of moving forward in a proactive rather than reactive way to prevent harassment, intimidation, and bullying, which, as you all know, has been a focus of the state and some new legislation. Israel informed us that apart from a resignation today, we are fully staffed as we move into the new school year, which is very good news, and that's it.
Is there any discussion of the personnel items? There's no policy and there's no Adam, so it is now public comment. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. I'd like to make a motion to limit each public comment to four minutes.
So moved.
We need a second?
Second.
And then Lynda, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Versa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simarusti?
No.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Wharton?
Yes.
And when you come to the podium, please state your name and your address, and also sign in on the ledger for us.
I just have a question. Dan, sorry. How are we going to time the comments?
I will time the comments.
Thank you.
Kimberly Bevelacqua Crane, President of HPEA. First, I'd like to welcome Mr. Soto as our superintendent. We are greatly looking forward to working with you. I've had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Soto once the school year is ready, and we have scheduled meetings planned. I've also had the opportunity to meet with most of the members of our elementary specialist team regarding the changes to our student special schedules and programs. These changes remain highly unsatisfactory to our team, and if not immediately addressed and corrected, will result in irreparable damage to their artistic, kinesthetic, social, emotional, and creative educational needs. I have a meeting scheduled this week with Mr. Soto to solidify solutions on this issue, which will undoubtedly necessitate a scheduling change. We will work tirelessly with Mr. Soto and with administration to provide information and support that they may need to correct this issue. There was an excellent suggestion this week that a scheduling committee be put together, and we're working on that with our members. We have other schedules to look at, and we are looking to resolve the needs of the students and the needs of administration and staff as well. I'm not going to give specifics, because we would really like to work this out, and we will be pleased to report the solutions that we come up with at the next board meeting. I'm looking forward to reporting that. Should we be unable to come to resolution with the special schedule? It is only at that time then I will present in, at the next board meeting, a detailed list from the specialist team of exactly what services our students will have lost by continuing the schedule as it stands. This is a very important issue to resolve, particularly in a district like Highland Park, where the arts and the specials, music, gym, visual arts, health, social and emotional learning, all of these things are things that are greatly valued by staff, by the board, and by the community. So we are greatly looking forward to resolving this. It's residual from the last administration, and it's really our biggest issue at the time. We're also looking forward to working with all of the new administration. So far, the reports are positive, and everyone seems very amicable to welcoming them into our district. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
First, I'd like to begin by wishing congratulations to Mr. Soto on becoming our superintendent. We look forward to a successful year. My question concerns our special needs students. Has the board ever looked into the feasibility and cost-effectiveness of developing programs for our needy students to educate them in district rather than sending them out of
So the answer is definitely yes. The question, I think, Mr. Soto, I'm not sure if you have a lot of specifics about this? Okay, so the previous administrations certainly have done that, and certainly are really looking at Mr. Shalala as being an expert in how to bring back students. We also have a CBI program, which is for very needy students at the high school, which has started this year. There's a lot of conversations with the Middlesex Ed Services Corporation, and this is always, I mean, we certainly recognize as a board that it is the most, you know, one of the most severe financial issues that we face
Right.
as well as, you know, an instructional, educational issue, and so this is something that we're always looking to do. One of the issues that we have here in Highland Park is obviously the size. We don't have, you know, we have maybe two kids with a particular diagnosis or three kids with a particular diagnosis. Hiring a full-time teacher for those two kids might not be feasible at every step, but this is certainly something that we review continually. The administration is always looking to bring students back into the district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I sort of have a little bit of an immediate problem, which would be the new dismissal. It is not feasible to leave Bartle School and make it to Irving School on time to pick up your child if you have a second grader or a third grader. I did not leave Bartle today until 20 minutes after dismissal. That gave me 10 minutes to get to Irving, park my car, figure out the new system there, and pick up my child. Now, I am one person. I was in the first third of the line at Irving for pickup. I waited 15 minutes. The line went down the block. I don't know why this has been changed. I, I thought the Bartle pickup actually was great. I'm not sure why we're switching it, maybe you all know, but this is not the type of thing where I'm going to go email the principal, because I need resolution, you know, maybe by tomorrow or the next day, because tomorrow I don't have a car. So obviously, I'll have someone else pick up my son at Irving, but does anyone know about this, have any information, why the sudden drastic changes to one student-at-a-time dismissal?
I couldn't really address all of the particulars, but certainly tomorrow morning, I'm scheduled to visit Irving and speak to the kids, and I'll definitely have a conversation with the principal so I can get greater insight, and will definitely make the changes that are, that are appropriate.
Okay, and then I have one more comment. It's for the Irving car pickup. In the past, I have always carpooled with my neighbors, which is a great idea, right? Because then you have one car going instead of three or four. This year, you are only allowed to sign up to pick up your own children. You may not pick up any other child but your own. And if the dismissal continues as it did today, nobody's going to want to pick up their child as a walker. So I just foresee this being a huge disaster, and I just wanted to bring it to your attention so that it would be resolved quickly.
Well, I appreciate it. So you've mentioned two items, right? The pickup and the dismissal.
Well, dismissal and pickup, it's all the
All inclusive, okay.
Yeah, it's all one thing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
I do want to say, when I first moved here, and I had a son, one son in fourth grade and one son in first grade, getting from Bartle, where, you know, I walked to Bartle and then I'd walk or try to make it to Irving on time. It was really hard because of the dismissal times were so close together, so that, I totally feel your pain.
This is totally different, though. This is, they're dismiss, literally dismissing kids one at a time.
What I'm saying, Darcy, is that I understand what a pain it is, or can be.
I mean, I've been doing it for years, both schools, and it's never been a problem. But it was definitely an issue today, and it will continue to be one unless there are changes, so, thank you.
Thanks, Liz.
Liz Estes, 311 North Fourth Avenue. I just wanted to say, I was so happy when I read in the minutes that the board had looked back on the, one of the decisions made last spring that I was very worried about, and had decided to reinstate Jen Lugo as the Title I Coordinator. And I was just really, you know, it meant a lot to me that the board was looking at things and rethinking things, and personally, I just think she does a great job, so that was great. Thanks, guys.
Did you mean Jen Lugo?
Thank you.
Or Jennifer Knapp?
Oh, I'm sorry. She was Jen Lugo. She is Jen Knapp, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz.
And Liz, I just have to tell you, as much as the board would love to take credit for that, all the credit for that goes to Mr. Soto.
Virginia Lofton, 303 South Second Avenue. I have a couple of questions. One is the technology form. Can somebody explain what that MAC address is? I'm unwilling to let it on that form until I'm fully clear on what it means and what kind of information I'm
What form is this that you're talking about?
There's a form that kids have to bring their, their technology, they have to provide some sort of MAC address.
Did you try calling the school?
What?
Did you try calling the school?
No. I just figured, okay, I'll ask, maybe somebody could make it clear.
A MAC address is, for a piece of hardware, is very similar to our social security numbers. There's, there's each, the only, a MAC address exists once per device, so my phone So my phone, even though there's millions of them around the world, only one MAC address exists for this particular device.
But if you're saying it's similar to a social security number, I'm not putting it on a school phone.
No, but it doesn't, so, but it doesn't do, like, it's the most secure way of allowing devices onto a network. Rather than password, it ensures that only this particular device, and therefore the device's owner, when included with a username and password, can access the network. It's used throughout industries as a very secure way to connect. No one's going to take that MAC address and kind of fake or spoof or manipulate. It doesn't have, it doesn't give anyone access to any personal identification information.
Does it allow somebody in the school to view what's going on on somebody else's, on a personal computer?
No, not the MAC address specifically. There's many other things that'll do that, but not just having the MAC address alone will not do that, no.
Okay. All right. And I, another question is, my son, who started ninth grade today, made the decision on his own to take honors classes, but he was not recommended for them by his teachers, so it was his own choice. And he heard today or found out today that if you were not recommended, you are not eligible for the GPA boost. Is, do we know? That's not true?
Doesn't seem to make any sense, but...
It doesn't seem to me. That's why I'm asking.
That's a good question, yeah. Ask, you can certainly speak with Mr. Lassiter about that.
Okay, that's one. And then one more thing I wanted to let you know about was, the State DEP Division of Fish and Wildlife has a program available for schools called the National Archery in Schools Program. It is a grant program that makes archery available for fourth through 12th grades, and it's aligned to the national physical education standards. So you can apply for this and get some money for archery. And there are, I forget, I think 11 schools in Middlesex County that do it, that do it. There's 147 schools in the state that participate. So it's one of the most popular sports that's happening right now, so...
Great.
If you're interested, we can donate some archery equipment that he's grown out of, and we'd love to see it happen.
That'd be great. Yeah, we'll definitely take a look at that. Thank you.
I can forward it to...
Oh, yeah, you can forward it to the board, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jordan Siegel. Congratulations. Quick question to the board. Does Irving School and Bartle School have school counselors for those positions discontinued?
Israel? Don't we have shared counseling staff?
Shared, I think. Who shares, who's the counselor that is shared between Irving and Bartle? Because I couldn't, couldn't find one, I couldn't, and...
Were you looking for a specific concern?
I'm blanking on her name. It was the gym teacher. The gym teacher got moved into the count, into Miss, I just, I'm blanking on her name. Sarah Kirk, right.
Sarah Kirk, right.
Is in Bartle. And I don't know, is she shared with Irving? I don't think that, maybe I...
Is there a specific concern, or?
Just as the president of the union said, based on the social-emotional growth for the students, I just was, I was wondering, because it is a concern for some people around my area, so I wasn't sure if...
Yeah, we have counselors and social workers in each of the buildings. I can't give you the specifics about it, but yes, there are there, and they should be certainly very findable on the district website, and they certainly work with students when, when issues arise.
No, I wasn't able to find them on the district website. That's, you know, because I thought I could steer somebody that way, and...
I see, you have a recommendation for someone? You have a recommendation for someone, or?
No, no, I just wanted to know if I could steer somebody to somebody specifically, or...
Oh, I see.
Is it somebody covering for somebody, or?
So if there's, if there's an immediate concern, if there's an immediate issue in Irving School, should the student go to the principal's office, and the principal will, will direct the student to?
Let me address this. We want to be very accommodating to answering questions, and I'm respectfully requesting for, for the community. Whenever you have a question, let's go through some protocols, the lines of communication. The first one you should be communicating with is the teacher. So you have the teacher, you have the guidance counselor, and then you have the principal. When we do it that way, principals don't feel that people are circumventing the lines of communication. So whenever you have a concern, that's why we have building principals that are very capable. You have a question, you call the schools, and you need that answer from the building principals. If you do not get an answer from the building principals or any administrator or the teacher and you're not satisfied, then you reach out to the office of the superintendent, and I'll get back to you. And so rest assured that even though I might not have the answers right away, I'm going to recognize the fact that you do have a question, I'm going to investigate, and I'm going to get back to you that same day. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Anna Perre. I live at 344 Becker Street, and...
Anna, can you just move the microphone down, please?
Sure. I spoke last spring about the ELL, English Language Learners, and the theoretical and practical problems involved in segregating them, crossing them all in a classroom per grade. I understand, although I don't have confirmation, that that's the orientation the district has followed. This year, I know by what I read from the Department of Education that the district was expected to submit a three-year plan for ELL education. My question is simply, has that been done? Will it be done? Will it be publicized? Does it contain anything that justifies this kind of switching direction where all shelter instruction will be conducted in the same classroom per grade? Thanks.
Let me answer that. Well, Anna, I'll tell you that ELL students are very dear to my heart because I'm a product. I was an ELL student. My first language was Spanish, so I remember receiving services at that time when I was very young. I've met with Bill Shalas, who is overseeing ELL, and he's coming up with a plan. We're going to be sharing that plan. We're not ready at this juncture to share any plans until they're really mapped out. We want, you know, some, you know, community input, so he's going to be sharing that very soon. You were mentioning about the segregation of some, certain kids. We had a number of kids in second grade. We had about 12 that were all in the same classroom. That's been reduced to seven, and we're going to continue to work on that. Okay, so in terms of your theory, a three-year plan, yes, that's a conversation that we've had.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Is there any other public comment?
Sorry, I have a very long last name. My name is Michelle McFadden-Dina Cola. I'm at 118 South Second Avenue. First of all, I wanted to congratulate Mr. Soto. I do hope that with this change, we, we see lots of different changes, all hopeful ones. And I, I wanted to also say that the answer that you gave to Mr. Siegel, that was what I personally expect from a superintendent. So I really, I just wanted to point that out and compliment you. And I also wanted to talk about, well, I have a question. Mr. Soto had said in his introductory speech that we were understaffed, and then Ms. Sherber said that we were properly staffed or that we had enough staff, so I wasn't sure.
He was actually just referring to central office. The central office right now has fewer people than it's ever had before. I'm talking about, in, in the classrooms, we're fully staffed in our classrooms, in our, in our resource rooms, in our guidance offices. Mr. Soto was only referring to the central office.
And again, about, kind of looking back to Mr. Siegel's answer that you gave about the guidance office, that kind of confused things for me further, about the staffing, so I just wasn't sure about that. Secondly, I wanted to make sure that, that the board and the community knows that, you know, I, I think that there's been a lot of changes to specials, so far as I can see this year. I mean, it's the first day, but from what I've heard, things are much different. And I do want to stress the importance of arts education, from my perspective as a parent and as an educator. And then number three, Liz Rosner talked about the new dismissal, and I had heard from Bartle parents that they weren't so happy about the Bartle dismissal at the second grade door, that the third grade door somehow was different. The second graders were only allowed one at a time, where they were in the building, and there was a teacher at the top of the staircase, and they had a walkie-talkie system where they had to, was this the same? So they had a walkie-talkie system that they had to, you know, call in to the building to get the child, like, launched out of the building. And there was just a kind of a chaotic-looking crowd, and I actually crossed the street so that I could kind of move on with my daughter. So I wasn't sure if that was something that you were aware of, but that was also kind of a danger because there were so many kids there, and I really couldn't tell who was who and what was what. So dismissal is definitely something to keep your eye on, and that was about it. Thanks.
Is there any other public comment?
I just wanted to mention, I got a couple of other, you know, texts after school about dismissal, too, so...
But it seems like that's something that ought to be addressed with the building principal.
Yeah, absolutely.
Not, at least at the first, you know, the first pass should be with the building principal.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Pat Collin on 324 Graham Street. A few things. I did work in a district for 10 years, and the counseling situation Irving was that there was a full-time counselor, and it was let go, I believe, because of budgetary reasons. So counseling at Irving is now kind of by committee. So if I have it right, the Bartle counselor does a day, the middle school might do a day, and the guidance, Teen Center did a day or two. So as a parent, speaking to a parent, I recommend speaking to the principal. We had good, good success with, excuse me, with Ms. Romano. The other question, I guess, is, I was a little bit late. I don't know if there was any update on salary negotiations or contract negotiations, and if you're able to say anything, I do want to share my concern that that get done.
Sure, yeah. At, at the last meeting, we announced that an agreement had been reached between the board and the HPEA. That is yet to be ratified, but it's pending.
In that case, I should have come last time. That's wonderful. The final thing is, I have a sixth grader now, and a few meetings ago, I kind of cringed at the idea that she was going to have 24 benchmarks in her English class. So I'm wondering, I guess at the district level, Mr. Soto, kind of what's your stance on managing the amount of testing our kids are getting, our benchmarks, or, and maybe in particular, what the middle school is going to be doing?
Well, that's why we're not approving the, the benchmarking. We're going to take a closer look at that and have conversations with, with, with the teachers. It's not, it's not the quantity, it's the quality of the benchmarks, and certainly 24 seems to be excessive, so I agree.
That's encouraging. Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. Is there any other public comment? Claire, could we have the curriculum items, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. I would like to move items one and two on, under curriculum on the agenda.
With the corrections.
With the corrections that I read in.
Second.
Is there any further discussion of those items?
I just wanted, I want to, kind of want to reiterate what a bunch of people said, which was, you know, I think they really appreciate Mr. Soto's, you know, very open remarks to us earlier in the meeting, and I want to say that I do as well. And so I'm very glad that we're, we're tabling those benchmarks. I think that makes the people in the audience who've come and have spoken and raised their concerns, make them feel like, I hope it makes them feel like that they were heard, that we're not a district that's interested in, you know, seeing our kids overly tested, and we want to make sure that we keep that in check. So that's fantastic. One other issue that did come up over the course of the year in terms of the curriculum was social studies and how that was going to be rolled out. So I just wanted to mention that that did come up tonight, too, and that that will be forthcoming, because I really think as we move forward, the more transparent we are about all of these things that we're doing and we're working on, getting the schedule, the special schedule straightened out, getting the ELL programming straightened out for those kids, the more information we give, even as we go, even if we don't have it yet, we'll have it next meeting, we'll have it two meetings from now, it just makes people feel that much more secure. So I just wanted to mention that the social studies had come up as well, that hopefully within, I think you said, the next meeting or two, we'd have that to roll out, so, you know, that all those things are in the works.
Any other discussion of those items? Linda?
Ms. Aversa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Catherine, could we have the finance items, please?
I'd like to move items one through three.
Is there any discussion of those items? Linda?
Ms. Aversa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Ann, could we have the personnel items, please?
I'd like to move items one through 14.
Second.
Is there any further discussion of those items? Linda?
Ms. Aversa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
There's no policies. There's also no president's report. Old business. The first item that we have is to continue the review of the board goals. So we are all sent the board goals in their newest form. And now we get to go through them again. So I had some thoughts about how to make this, these five goals into four, and I think it came, starts with the goal one and two of the bulleted items on goal one. Do you have a copy of this, by the way? The new, the new ones.
It's at the back of the agenda?
It's on the back of the agenda? The new one?
It's on the draft, the draft.
Or do you want to, do you want to look it up online, or? It's on the public agenda? Yeah, can you, can you get one for, yeah. Linda's going to get you one.
Dan, when do these have to be solidified?
They should be done, if not this meeting, then certainly by the 18th, or the 22nd, I guess. So for... How are you going to use a pen if you're looking at it on the computer? Don't you want a hard copy of it, then? You could write some notes on it.
No, I can make my notes here.
Okay. Goal one and goal two are, I think, awfully similar, sort of, in a way. Goal two is really directed at staff, and goal one is kind of general organizational kinds of things. So when I was reading through these, my thought was just to sort of combine these two, in a way. And I guess, you know, this, there looks like there are six bullets here, but I guess the first question is, with the presentation of curriculum, do we need to continue with this first bullet, which is to continue to align curriculum with the state's standards, especially the core content curriculum standards? Or is that achieved?
It's not, is it, I don't think it's completed, is it?
Yeah, I mean, we are still looking at the social studies ones, we're still looking at the science ones, we're still looking at the ELL, ELL ones. I wouldn't touch that until all that's done.
Okay, and the third bullet, which is develop a system... Okay, and the third bullet, which is develop a system of benchmark assessments, since we have not yet approved the ELA ones, then we should keep that bullet in there. Okay. So the, my other, my, my thought then was the first bullet of goal two and the third bullet of goal two.
Can I, can we go back to goal one? I mean, actually, I want to, if anything, I'd like to put an emphasis on number two and, you know, to make sure that we're, you know, at least once during this year, we're doing some sort of presentation on how project-based learning is going to be, or has been or is going to be, you know, worked into the curriculum.
Well, we can certainly ask the administration to present on that, right? I mean, in goal two, the first and the third bullets are somewhat similar, right? I mean, it's establishing professional development committees, et cetera, that meet identified needs, and the identified needs are basically perhaps the things that are outlined in the first bullet. District initiatives, content knowledge requirements, and state requirements. So the thought would be to combine that first bullet with the third bullet by just adding sort of a line to those three enumerated items, and then just make that a big academic goal.
Is there a reason to, you want fewer goals? Is that what you're saying, Dan?
I was, I was looking at four goals, maybe. One is academic, one's community, the fourth one is planning, and goal five is the social-emotional. I think as a structure for administration, that, that's a pretty clear kind of...
Say that again?
Yeah, the first one, the first two are really academic. Goal three is a community goal, goal four is a...
So one, two, sorry, one, two turns into one, which is academic?
Academic. Goal three is a community goal, clearly. Goal four is a planning goal, goal five is a social-emotional kind of goal.
Do you have an idea of how to combine the first two? I mean, have you?
Yeah, so, so this, so it would be, it would still be maybe five bullet points if that was, you know, what we're, what we're interested in doing, or the first and the third bullets could be combined, since we do talk about curriculum and benchmark assessments as, you know, sort of hand-in-hand.
But I mean, in terms of the actual goals themselves?
I actually think that the language in goal one and goal two really aren't too different, except that the, the thing that I would add is, goal one would say, "to ensure the success of students by providing diverse and high-quality educational opportunities and by implementing focused staff development."
I like that.
Right? Okay.
I like the student-focused best practice, though. Can we keep that?
Nobody knows what that means, though. Student focus, what's a student-focused best practice?
Well, that if, the practices that we are looking to implement, that we're always making sure that the students are at the center of all of those.
I think that's the actual goal.
Well, she's saying that's, that's language, Darcy's saying in goal two, it says, it actually uses the word "student-focused best practice." And goal, goal one is, I think, general enough to probably encompass that.
Right.
We could, we could just tag that language onto one of the bullets under, because, because I like the succinct way of combining the two.
We do, too.
And then if, but if we take, there's a couple of bullet points there where we could call out the student-focused best practice.
And I, I think for the first and the third bullets in goal one, we can probably just mush them together in a sentence somehow.
Can't believe you said mush.
Mush.
So the third bullet would be perfectly established, "district and building-level professional development with a focus on student best practice or student-focused best practice." We could weave, we could weave the language in, in there somehow.
Thoughts? I'm just going to keep talking.
I like, I like the direction, because when I was thinking of how to condense it, it would have rolled goal five into breaking it into one and two, one being staff-focused, building-focused, and the other being student-focused. So we could have, we could have done it that way, too, but I much prefer this. So I think it's important that we call out cultural competency.
Wait, where is?
I think in goal number one is really understood because you mentioned it to ensure the success of students. So if you're ensuring the success of students, it has to be student-focused. So I think in terms of, we're looking at pedagogy then, when you're talking about using student-focused best practice, best practices are coming from, strategies coming from the teachers.
Right. That's a good point.
So what's the, what's the rewording of goal one? Let's take goal one and two and put it into one with one...
Right. So goal one could just say, "to ensure the success of students by providing diverse and high-quality educational opportunities and by implementing, by implementing focused staff development." Period. And then the way that the, the current goals are formatted, that to achieve this is on the next line, which I like better, because this is, if you look at it, it's like next line, not bolded, indented a little bit.
Okay, so did somebody write that down? Are you writing that down?
No, Linda's got it. Linda's got it.
Linda's got it?
Okay. The first bullet in there should say, "continue to align curriculum with the state standards, comma, and develop a system of benchmark assessments to measure this, the academic growth of standards, of students throughout the year." We don't need to include the fact that we have to do core curriculum content standards because that's state-mandated. So continue to align curriculum with the state standards, comma, and then get rid of specifically NJCCCS. And, and then just take the whole text from the third bullet and put it in there.
Kind of the rest of the bullets.
So the, the second bullet's good, in goal one. And we can talk about, as part of the implementation plan for that goal, getting some, getting a presentation maybe from one of the principals, either Kelly or Anthony, about project and scenario-based instruction. So the third bullet of that then would become, create professional learning communities and student leadership teams. That's bullet three. And then bullet four would be, establish district and building-level professional development committees to assess building needs and develop district-wide and building-level professional development plans to meet, or that, that are aligned to district initiatives, content knowledge requirements, and state requirements. No, no. Get rid of "to meet identified needs," yeah. So establish district and building-level professional development committees to assess building needs and develop district-wide and building-level professional development plan that is aligned to, or that aligns with district initiatives, content knowledge requirements, and state requirements. That aligns... That align with. District-wide and building-level professional development plans that align...
Than the three categories that you called out.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And then, and that's four bullets, and that should just be done.
Can I just make a, just...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Wordsmith.
No, it was even switching a couple of things. We kind of moved the benchmarking in with the curriculum. What do you guys think about moving the project and scenario-based instruction in there? Like, so that as we're working on the curriculum, we're constantly keeping an eye towards maintaining that as well, because while, you know, yes, we have to move towards Common Core, we have to move towards all these things, I think as a district, I think we have a very strong sense that we want to maintain the arts, that we want to maintain project-based learning, that we want to maintain kind of a more, a more of a creative sense, a more interactive sense for our students, and we don't want to go too far in the direction, you know, as we've seen by our vote tonight, in the way of benchmarking. So I'd personally like to see us move the curriculum together with the project-based learning and projects and scenario-based learning, and then leave the benchmarking as a separate, its own separate bullet, and maybe even put some wording in there with the benchmarking to say that, you know, we want to make sure that we keep some checks and balances on the benchmarking. You know, so our curricular focus is more on, yes, complying, but yes, also, you know, maintaining the characteristic that makes Highland Park Highland Park, and then we also have, you know, the need for the benchmarking, but we're going to keep that in check.
We could just put expand project and scenario-based instruction as the second item in, in a list in the first bullet.
Okay.
Right, continue to align curriculum, comma, expand project and scenario-based instruction, comma, and develop a system of benchmarks.
Okay.
The second bullet basically is going to become the second item in the, in the list in the first bullet.
But can it wait?
Was this supposed to be a list and this?
No, no.
No, just a comma, you know.
Where would you want to put it?
So continue to align curriculum with state standards, comma, expand project and scenario-based instruction.
But it's, it's continuing to develop a system of benchmarks because we've started. So can it be continue to align curriculum, continue, you know, continue to develop a system and expand project and scenario-based instruction?
And then also, because the third, because the, the third bullet is also part of now the first bullet, so that's...
So Claire likes that as a, as the third item in the list. Continue to align curriculum, comma, continue to develop a system of benchmark assessments, comma, and expand project and scenario-based instruction.
So is it continue to again?
Yeah.
Continue to align curriculum with state standards, comma, continue to develop a system of benchmark assessments to measure the academic growth of all students throughout the year, and expand?
Yep.
So it's just one bullet now?
Yep.
Couldn't it even just say, "continue to align curriculum and a system of benchmark assessment," so we're continuing both of those while, you know, maintaining a focus on project and scenario-based instruction? See what I mean? So you're just continuing both of those, but we're maintaining this focus.
Continue to this and this, while this.
I like it the other way.
I like it the other way.
It would, it would still be three bullets under goal one, though, just for...
Yeah.
Yeah, it's all going into one.
Okay. You want to leave this for now? I'm going to the second goal, which is the communication. Right, so goal three, you need to put a two in front of it, so it's two, strengthen communication. And I actually have no, I think the bullets in this are pretty much right on.
What was the point of establishing a closer relationship with HPTV?
I had talked a lot about this at the last meeting. I'm, I had gone to a meeting of the Cable TV Advisory Committee, and there's an idea that's come out of HPTV to have a, I believe, monthly program on HPTV where Matt Hirsch is going to interview one member of the Board and/or one member of the Council. And the Council had already agreed to that. At the last meeting, we agreed to do that as well. So we're going to be working in conjunction with them over the course of the year to get that program up and running. And, you know, Dan is liaison for Public Information, I've been the liaison, the liaison for Cable Advisory, and there's just a lot of little moving pieces that they're, that they're trying to work on with us. So we want to make sure we're maintaining that this year.
We also talked about clubs, club possib, possibilities for club activities or other sorts of credit-bearing internships, or...
With the cable company?
With HPTV, or through HPTV, or other sorts of, you know, relationships that we could have with them that would be beneficial for the students.
That sounds good.
I was just going to say exactly that. I recall it wasn't just the district interview with the Board, but it could be a subject matter expert that the Board...
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
...invite, so, you know.
Or it would be the superintendent, or it might be another employee.
Someone, someone within the arena or...
So I just have a question. Can a board, a school board member speak individually at a, on a TV show?
I can.
You can, as the board president?
Yes.
And you could probably authorize somebody else, too. I mean, if there was a particular issue that was going on in finance or something, maybe Catherine would be the person to speak about that. It's like, it's not going to be a, you know, a gotcha kind of thing, it's going to be a, they're, whatever the relevant issue is of, you know, the month, they will let us know what they're thinking of, and then we can decide who the, you know, person is we want to designate, so it's going to be a very collaborative process.
I, I think that the, the decision lies with the board president on who's going to speak for the Board. I, I mean, I myself would not go to a meeting and, and be speaking as anybody but myself as a resident of Highland Park unless the board president told me that I could be speaking for the Board. The board president, as I've always understood it, is the one who speaks for the Board in any other venue than at this table.
Yeah, I'm just saying that we could, that decision could be made if we wanted to, for whatever reason.
So community goal is good. Planning and social-emotional goal, those two goals become three and four, obviously. Cultural competency is actually competence with an E. Well, I looked at, I mean, I was trying to figure out what this is. So there's an NEA article, that's a really interesting article about cultural competence for educators. So... Do we want to add any bullets to those two goals?
On goal three, well, goal four, which is no goal three, where we have just developed a technology plan, there was discussion at the last meeting about actually forming, we were talking about a technology committee, but I'm thinking maybe it's more really along the lines of a technology task force, you know, kind of like we did with communications. So I'd certainly like to see us add that in there so that we're getting actual specific people who commit to that task force. When meetings are had, those people are, you know, with the ideas...
But that, that wouldn't necessarily be part of the goals. I mean, that would fall underneath development, you know, that would be part of the implementation of developing a technology plan, no?
Yeah, and I think that that's definitely something that we will direct the administration to do. I think the goal is the establishment of the, the plan itself. We had, at the last board meeting, I think there was, you know, there was pretty good conversation about, and Brian was very much in favor of trying to get a group that was going to meet regularly, that was going to discuss these issues, that was going to provide, you know, advice and perspectives on various things, and it should be a diverse group, obviously, towards getting a technology plan that's really meaningful. His presentation was great in terms of the nuts and bolts of what's, what we have and what we need and, you know, the costs and those kinds of things, but the implementation is obviously an administrative prerogative that, you know, with community input would be a much richer product. So do we, are we comfortable with those two goals as they're written? Do we want to add anything? Okay, so let's leave them for now. We'll, we'll bring them back on the 22nd, and you can think until then with, with the sort of the new structure of that, the big first goal, and we'll approve them on the 22nd. So Linda, you'll send those out to us whenever you have a chance. Okay? Thank you, everyone. Is there any other old business? Is there any new business?
I have a question for Mr. Soto. If you could tell us about the first, the professional development that the teachers did on the first four days of school, or of the, of this year.
Well, I've, I haven't heard any major complaints about the professional development. I know there was some changes.
I haven't either, I'm just curious.
I know there was, there were some changes in individual schools, but, but I am ready to prepare to, to discuss what we're planning in the future for professional development for teachers. One of the things that I've learned from teachers is that they're pretty much tired of people talking to them about things that they pretty much know already, so it's just regurgitating what they already know, and so we want to move away from that model and prepare a model that's more inclusive and more hands-on. So the vision really is moving forward to have professional developments even within the districts, where we, we have a lot of talented teachers that can share their knowledge with their colleagues. But the professional development plan would look like introducing certain concepts that teachers are interested in learning, modeling for them to see what this concept, what this strategy looks like in the classroom, coming back, discussing what they saw, and then providing continued ongoing professional development support during the entire year. There can be many teachers that, once they feel a level of high trust with the staff developers, they'll invite the staff developers in the classrooms. And so, so one of the first things that we need to do is assess the needs of the, of the teachers and then create that plan. I'm already talking to Jen Knapp about that. We're going to have discussions with the teachers and with the principals to see what it's going to look like, and that's part of the discussion with, with Kim in terms of moving forward to solidify that particular piece. I do know we have some, some monies available for professional development, we want to make sure that we use it wisely. We want to make sure that we use it wisely. I also want to mention the technology plan. You know, certainly, Brian works very hard, and he forwarded to my attention his presentation, and we had a discussion about that. And it's nice to know we have a lot of stuff. But moving forward, I think everyone is more interested in knowing how we're going to use it, how the students are going to be trained, and how will kids relate to it. So the question is, why am I even using this? And so we're, we're looking at something to that effect. And then the last item in terms of, that you mentioned, Dan, was the item of our website. I don't know about you, but I'm not satisfied with our website. I think the website should be a little bit more interactive. I know that as a parent, I'm a grandfather, I want to know exactly what my kids are learning, and, you know, I think it'd be cool that a parent can click to a particular grade and know immediately what those kids are learning each week, each month. So that's something that we've been talking about, of creating a more interactive effect to our website, and that's coming. So we're going to be working very diligently towards those goals.
Thank you, Israel. And I also have the, I have the staff development schedule from, I think, from the last meeting that we had. So just some of the topics, Claire, we had, there were effective PLCs, which was done for middle school and high school staff. There's a lot of curriculum work and overview, work that was done on overviewing ELA and math curriculum, IP direct training, sheltered instruction, response to intervention, both behavioral and academic, some best practices, content area sort of meetings, and those were the big topics that were, that were covered.
Who, can you just tell me who did the sheltered instruction PD, and how many days was it?
It was Elizabeth Franks and Barbara Tedesco. It was on.
Which teachers?
ESL staff with the mainstream teachers who were involved.
You mean K-12, or?
Presumably, K-5 would be my guess, but I, but I don't know for sure. It says ESL staff, so I imagine that's K-12. And Barbara Tedesco is probably the, the state expert on ESL.
No, the reason I'm asking is because I had PD from them, and they were fantastic. We had four full days of PD in New Brunswick, and it was great.
Yeah, she's definitely someone to bring, to bring back, especially as, as this process goes on.
Thank you.
Is there any other new business? Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Darcy, I might need to put that pen back. I know he has his own.
Came with mine. Robert Savage, 123 Magnolia Street. Earlier this evening, I heard the Board of Ed and the supers' rosy sentiment that the proper communication is from the teacher to the principal and then to the super. And however, I think that's wonderfully short-sighted that this communication chain is sufficient in light of the topics going on in the district. And I just would like to understand what the intent was of suggesting that the proper communication chain was to the teacher when we're discussing things such as ELL programs, gifted and talented programs. We're talking about getting public input on ELL, public input on the technology plan that's still forthcoming. And what is the intent there? What do, I, I, most of us are adults, and I'm sure we know that if it's got something to do with my kid, I'm going to go to the teacher first. But there's a lot of other topics going on.
I mean, what's, is there an inference that you want us to take from, from the comment? I think Mr. Soto was just talking about the, you know, the general chain of command in terms of the conversations that we can have about specific things. There are certainly things that you're, you know, you should bring to the board's attention. And, you know, it was just a.
Okay, there's more in general?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
While I write, let's see if I can multitask. Randy Sumner, 215 Amherst Street. Hello. Congratulations. Thank you very much for serving with us. And welcome to the new year. I want to just talk about a couple of things that I heard earlier this evening and comment on them. I have kids in the middle school and high school, so it has been a while since I've been at Bartle and at Irving, but I do want to just report that in the five years I had kids in Irving, I had four different drop-off and dismissal procedures, and I had three different principals. So each one instituted a new drop-off and pickup, and then there was the construction, and there was a new pickup and drop-off. So I bring that up because I do think it's a problem at the beginning of every year. But I also think that if, if there was a change made this year, and if there is going to be discussion with parents and teachers and administration to try to make another change, that there is some look back at the history of what all the different drop-offs have been, potentially talking to parents who had kids at both Bartle and Irving during all these different types of procedures to learn from our perspective as parents, to contribute to the decisions that need to be made from the administrative side. Because I know oftentimes when the pickup and drop-off, the biggest focus is what the school needs. But some, but there does need to be, there are kids in both schools, so when you think about the kids in just one, you've got to think about the whole family. So please look back on the history somehow. I also, just, oh, the website. I wanted to just comment, I want to thank you very much for your comment about the website. Again, because I have kids in the middle school and the high school, we have seen, of course, in the middle school and the high school, there are some teachers that are very, very effective in making sure their website is linked to the, to the Board of Education, to the whole district pages, making sure their emails are properly linked and they go to the right email that the teacher's actually checking. And in addition, there are some teachers that update their website regularly, that update Power School regularly, and then there's others that definitely do not. There are some that have their websites linked to, but they don't ever make any changes. So I do actually ask you as a district to also look at the teachers that are models within the school and incorporate them in that conversation, because I do think there are some that are doing an amazing job at communicating with parents and with, with kids and both. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Randy.
I would just add to that, that we had had discussion back when I first got on the board. We had talked about fleshing out the board's section of the website as well, where we were going to write up little blurbs about ourselves, what committees we were on, individual email addresses, and that kind of went by the wayside. So I'd certainly, you know, like to see that get put back up there.
Is there an update on that? And Linda, I know at one point you were waiting for bios from people. Are you still?
I would have to look at who I've gotten them from and be back to you on that.
Jerry, have you not sent yours? Is that what you're saying? I'm just wondering, because you're looking a little guilty.
I was just going to.
I have too much to say.
Just the comment that you made, that there was four different schedules within the five years, that, like, it's not something that I've experienced, but it would, it would seem that we should probably establish a schedule at a district level, and therefore, if turnover occurs within the building, it's not something that's dictated by the building. It probably should only be changed if it's informed by a security concern or, or safety, or, obviously, you can't, you can't get around construction, so it would need to be then. But that's probably something that we should look at from a district standpoint rather than an individual building standpoint. So as you go through four principals, you don't have five different schedules, vice versa.
Yeah, there definitely, I mean, I do remember at least two of the changes to the dismissal policy were because the principal didn't like the way the old principal had done it.
Right, exactly.
And I don't, I mean, I don't know exactly what the new Bartle pickup situation is, but I know that as a parent who picked up from Irving for the last two years, it's, it was wildly unsafe, wildly. And it was very efficient, but it was wildly unsafe. I could have walked in, picked any kid that I wanted, and, and walked out the door.
And I know it was different that this year, last three years than when my kids were at.
Right, and so I think that we have to balance, obviously, the security and safety, which is, you know, the individual pickup model is, is clearly a safety and security reason, a concern, you know, approach, I should say. But there's a balance there, obviously. And we've actually gotten emails that there's too much time between the ending of Irving School and Bartle School, and then we've also now heard from Liz that there wasn't enough time. And so clearly, it's something that has to be worked on, and perhaps it was, you know, primarily due to first day kind of confusion, but it also may not have been just that. So I think that's something that, Israel, we'd certainly like you to look at with, you know, the two building principals.
That actually reminded me of something I meant to bring.
Thank you, Randy.
Up in old business, or I thought would come up in old business, but didn't, which was what we discussed from last week with Irving and the playground. Was there any resolution to that, or?
We actually can't talk about it right now. We sort of.
We'll have to go back to it?
Yeah.
All right, can we do that? Or should we do that, or we don't?
I don't know that we can from parliamentary procedure.
Can.
At the end of public comment, I suppose if board members want to comment, they have in the past, usually as a response to public comment.
And so what, so I could, what, implement the new?
No, after the public comment is completed, then you can comment on public comment.
Generally?
Yeah, which has taken place in the past.
Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Greenberg.
Michael Greenberg, 124 Montgomery Street, Highland Park. My question for Mr. Soto regarding the English language learners. When you had mentioned the sheltered instruction, I just wanted to know what your feeling about some of the positives of sheltered instruction, that the ESL teacher can spend more time with the students as a push-in model rather than pulling them out. They could match what the teacher is doing, rather than using the term mainstream teacher. I, I kind of have a mixed feeling about that, because mainstream kind of works with special needs students, and they're completely in different opposite ends of the academic spectrum. But to work with the cooperating teacher, that, you know, your feeling on the positives of sheltered instruction?
Well, there are many positives. One being, we don't need to have kids leaving the classroom and, you know, everyone noticing when children are leaving the classroom because they're ESL. I know how that feels, I was one of them. And I hope that, you know, I remember when I was a kid, I wished they, I would have been served inside the classroom, that's number one. Number two, what, particularly if you only have a few, if you have, let's say, five ESL students, what better way to give them that individualized approach within the classroom? Have the teachers present the mini lesson first, and then when the kids break up into the various groups, the ESL teachers will, you know, will work with, with, with their particular groups. So, I mean, there are a lot of advantages to the sheltered instruction, and I certainly endorse it.
Thank you.
I can tell you that sheltered instruction is for all kids. It's not for English language learners. It's, sheltered instruction is to help academic language learning, which a lot of kids need. It's not just English language learners, special ed kids, regular ed kids, all kids need to be improved their academic language learning. So that's how we're approaching it in New Brunswick, and every single teacher, certified staff member in New Brunswick, has been trained in sheltered instruction. It's the same thing as, have you heard of SIOP? SIOP is, it's a model, it's called Sheltered Instruction Observation Protocol. And sheltered instruction is, is a way of talking about SIOP without saying SIOP, because SIOP is owned by Pearson. So, as Pearson owns everything. Shelter, so sheltered instruction is not just something you do for ELL kids. It's something, it's a set of best practices. So I'm delighted that some people are getting trained in it here, and looking forward to it being expanded to everybody.
Thank you, Claire. Is there any other public comment?
Mr. Soto, thank you for those words that you shared with us. I would appreciate it. Thank you. And I wish, wish you success in our town, too.
Thank you, Denise. Is there any other public comment? Okay, we should probably go back to the Irving issue. This does pertain to public comment because it's related to pickup and drop-off. So I think we're sort of within our rights at some loose way to be discussing it. So we had asked at the last board meeting for sort of a perspective, I guess, from Kelly. So maybe can you share, maybe start our conversation about the security of the playground and the proposal with regard to, to drop-off?
There is a concern about the security of our students. One being that when, for example, when students are participating in after-school programs, we have numerous parents that, you know, certainly it's wonderful for parents to use the facilities, but when they're using the facilities, when the after-school program is going on, it's very difficult to curtail who's there. So while we have a number of parents with their kids having a wonderful time, who is to say that we might not have an intruder coming in and you won't even notice? It's very difficult to identify every single, you know, adult that's there. Point of, a perfect example that happened today, after-school program, there was an adult, and he was an intruder. This, they, this person was not identified as a parent, and so I got the call. I've, you know, had, had conversations with many of the principals that I want to know exactly what's going on in every building, and certainly I got the call that there was a particular person that was not a parent. And so once again, that indicates to us that maybe it's a good idea just to close the gates, to ensure that the kids that are participating in after-school programs are safe. Ladies and gentlemen, it only takes something to happen to one child. And you know and I know, one child too many. So to safeguard our kids, I understand Kelly's perspective as to keeping, you know, other children out that already have been dismissed with their parents out of the premises of the school. Now, once the after-school program finishes, then you can open up the gate and open up to the public. It's easier during the summertime because, you know, the day is longer, and as we go into the wintertime, it gets, it gets a little dark, a little early. So I also found out that there is another park, there was another playground close to the school, that it's another option for parents. So, you know, certainly, we're asking the community to, to cooperate with us, and this is for the best for, for the children's safety. In terms of the dismissal, I'll have, you know, continued conversations with both Bartle and Irving regarding dismissal procedures.
And I think one of the, there's sort of this intermediate issue about kids who get dismissed and then are on the playground as they get dismissed prior to the after-school program coming out. So we might want to look at maybe a time at which, you know, the playground must be cleared or something like that before, you know.
Right, because don't some of the kids get dismissed?
Into the playground.
Into the playground.
Yeah, or they walk across to the, you know, the car or whatever it is.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, do we have a time? I mean, is the idea, so has this already been implemented, I guess, is my, my question? Have parents already been notified in some way that once their students are dismissed? And is this going to be, I mean, I guess my question is then, is this, that going to be rolled out at Irving and Bartle? Because at Bartle, there is also a lot of after-school play on the hill, a lot of those clips. I mean, I know, I'm guilty of it myself, you know, the kids are playing on the hill, all of a sudden you look, where's the kids? Oh, they're on the back in the playground, and there are the after-school kids, and then you're like, you know, racing to get your kids. So it absolutely happens, so it's, it's tricky.
Yeah, that's going to be part of the conversation with the principals tomorrow when I visit their schools.
Okay, so by the next meeting, we'll have a definitive, because, you know, I mean, I think, like anything, there'll be people who agree, and there'll be people who disagree, and, you know.
And I think, obviously, before, before anything, because, I mean, you asked the question, has it been implemented? It has not been implemented because today was the first day, and obviously, it didn't happen. But we, when it, let's say we were going to start this next Monday, or let's say we were going to start this Wednesday or something, there has to be notification to the parents. There has to be a number for them to call so that they can, you know, have that conversation, whether it's with Kelly or whether it's with Anthony.
I like, I like the, I fully respect the need for security and safety. I like the idea of the compromise with a certain period of time where the after-school program wouldn't utilize the playground immediately after dismissal. So I, I mean, I think that's a reasonable compromise.
Yeah, I mean, I'd love to see a 15, 20-minute buffer in there after dismissal, where it's like, you know, we're asking dismissed parents and kids to be off the playground by, you know, 3:15 or 3:20 or whatever, and then after-school doesn't come out till 3:30. So it's not this like, you know, here's your hat, where's your hurry kind of thing. So it's not this like, you know, here's your hat, where's your hurry kind of thing.
Okay.
Thank you for going back to that, Dan.
Yeah, thank you. We need a motion to, a resolution to go into an executive session at 6:30 PM on September 22nd, 2014, at Bartle School to discuss personnel, litigation, and negotiations.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.